Welcome to Park Crossing High School. Before we start with our recognitions, I'd like to remind you that we're going to have a community meeting afterwards at We Can Network, and we hope you'll stay for that as well. It's an exciting way to get to know some of your neighbors and also to help find solutions to some of our problems in our community. So please try to stay if you can.
Welcome to Park Crossing High School. Before we start with our recognitions, I'd like to remind you that we're going to have a community meeting afterwards at We Can Network, and we hope you'll stay for that as well. It's an exciting way to get to know some of your neighbors and also to help find solutions to some of our problems in our community. So please try to stay if you can. This evening, we'd like to recognize this student for a musical achievement on a national stage. Austin Shubert recently attended the National Fine Arts Festival in Anaheim, California, and won fourth place in the guitar category. Now, you may be thinking, "Well, fourth place?" But there were 65,000 students attending. Austin is a student at BTW and one of the stars of their fantastic show band. Well, his parents are here? Is Dr. Stark here? Well, okay. Well, the show band, if you've never seen the BTW show band, is quite impressive, and we're really hoping that we can talk Austin into coming back one day and playing for us as we get ready for our board meeting, maybe when it's down. I've been playing guitar a long time, and my guess is he can run circles around me. Let's give him a great round of applause. Okay. With Derek Evans from Breitlinger Technology High School and Denise Whittle from Bell McGrath Middle School, please come forward. This month, we renew our recognition of our MPS Employee of the Month Award, thanks to a kind donation by the good folks at Baptist Health. We especially want to thank Tommy McKinnon, the Director of Marketing and Communication for Baptist Health, for providing the gift cards that each month's winner will receive. We also want to thank Bro Cribb, the Executive Editor of the Montgomery Advertiser, who's agreed to help thank our wonderful employees with an article in the advertiser each month celebrating their accomplishments. Each month during the school year, we're going to honor a classified and a certificated employee, and this month, we have two excellent examples of these dedicated professionals who serve our students. Denise Whittle is a typical MPS overachiever. In her nomination, Principal Sonia Floyd's--is Miss Floyd here? There she is, up in the chief seat. Principal Floyd wrote of Miss Whittle, "She is very passionate about her job and about the students at Bell McGrath." She wore many hats last year: BI, parent liaison, gear-up, PBIS coordinator, leadership team partners and education coordinator, 21st Century coordinator, Saturday School lead instructor, and many others. And I saw her when she came in, she brought her own speaker. She was a part of the band, so she's doing a little bit of everything. And she continues to wear those multiple hats without questioning her role as a behavior interventionalist. Her ultimate goal is to do what's best for our students at Bell McGrath and students and families in the community. She is gracious to give and is constantly waiting, wanting to serve others with a smile on her face. She finds opportunity to motivate those around her and is always looking for solutions to make every situation better. It is with great pleasure that we name Miss Whittle as MPS Certified Employee of the Month, and if you will come over here, I'm going to give you your $25 gift card. As most of you know, we have to limit the amount that we get, so she gets the most you can get, $25 from Baptist Health, and we appreciate that. Mr. Derek Evans is this month's classified employee. Principal April Lee and Assistant Principal Jason Lurin, are you here?
Yep, right here.
Okay, great. Hold on, okay. When Miss Lee sent in the recommendation, she observed that Mr. Evans' moral qualities are above reproach. He is patient, considerate, and exercises good judgment. He's proactive with safety of the school in mind. He helps with the morning take-in. He's the first person at school every morning. He takes it upon himself to arrive early when there's bad weather so students can get in the building early. Mr. Evans is also a volunteer track and basketball coach. He is generous and kind and a good soul, and the students know he cares about them. He is a great asset to the school. A well-deserved acknowledgement, Mr. Derek Evans. Well, I guess you have to spin it one place, because it's tardy. Congratulations. Well, let's give them both a big hand of applause. All right, we have one other thing to talk about in just a moment. This is National Hispanic Awareness Month, and the Board is going to acknowledge that with a celebration of the accomplishments of historic--I'm sorry--of Hispanic Americans. And this celebration began in 1968 with Hispanic Heritage Week and expanded to a 30-day period September 15 through October 15 in 1988, whereas almost 20% of the total population of the United States, almost 50 million people, are Hispanic, whereas Spanish is one of 49 languages that is identified as a primary use by our students, whereas over 2,140 Montgomery Public Schools students identify themselves as Hispanic, which is more than 7% of the student body, and whereas Hispanic men and women have made countless contributions to our society. Now therefore being resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Education has offered this ceremonial resolution proclaiming September 15 through October 15, 2017, is National Hispanic Heritage Month in Montgomery Public Schools. And let it therefore be further resolved that the Board hereby encourages all MPS schools to acknowledge the contribution of Hispanic Americans and join in celebrating their rich history and heritage during this event. We resolve this 20th day of September, 2017. And I'd like to introduce Lizette--Lizette. She's our ESL Director. We appreciate everything she does.
Mr. Song, I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. I want to bring her down here, too. She was one of our Leadership Academy graduates today, so she's being honored.
And finally, October is also National Expletive Month, and the Board acknowledges the work of our schools and what they do with students who struggle with breathing issues, and congratulates the teachers and staff in reference. Help students face those challenges and succeed. Thank you very much.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening, and certainly I do apologize for my tardiness. It's like a snail's pace out there, and I had no idea that it would take as long as I took to get out to Park Crossing. But I do apologize for my tardiness, and I'm sorry about that, but that's the way it happens occasionally. The next item on our agenda will be to receive a confirmation, and the first comment by Dr. Ed Richardson is the next individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My primary purpose--
Please. Can you get to a mic? If you can hear anything--
Is that better? If I could sit here, I almost have to put it in my mouth. You don't have a portable mic, do you? There's a tie to the system. No, I'd rather be up here. I understand you'd like to hear if I'm going to--
Is that better? There we go. I'll just hold it. There we go. Thank you. Again, my name is Ed Richardson. As you probably read, I've just been appointed the interim State Superintendent. I've been on the job now about eight days, and if you remember, I served as State Superintendent for about eight years prior to this, so I assume I didn't get it right the first time, so I'm around again trying to get it right this time. I'm here for one specific purpose tonight, and it deals with the intervention by the state of the Montgomery Public Schools, and I want to more clearly define the standards for your intervention and to modify the model for this intervention. Now, I'm going to be very direct, and I'm going to say it as it needs to be said in my opinion, because we have some very serious problems that with all of our experience put together, it's going to challenge all of us to resolve it. And I thought it was so interesting to be reminded of the students being recognized from the band and ROTC students coming in looking sharp, that that's what it's all about. And as I said to the State Board when I met with them yesterday, my primary concern has been and will remain the education of our students, and I'm less concerned about inconvenience to adults. And I think we sometimes lose sight of how we accomplish the first. I've devoted my entire working career in Alabama's public schools in both K-12 and higher education. In fact, I started my career right here, not in this building, of course, this was a pasture, but in my career in the Montgomery Public Schools. In fact, Mrs. Mary Briers and I were on the faculty of Cloverdale School together, and I served as principal there for several years. And I'd have to tell you, with all the experience ranging from principal and superintendent and state superintendent and president of Auburn University, I can tell you that I consider my years at Cloverdale to be a highlight of my entire career, and there are many reasons for that. And I have always--I would always do the best I can to promote not only public education but the Montgomery Public Schools, because there's just a loyalty, there's just a feeling still that I have for Montgomery. But I only support public schools if they are achieving high standards or working as hard as they can to achieve high standards. And I'll have to tell you without any apologies, I'm embarrassed to be here tonight for this reason, because the Montgomery Public Schools is not meeting the required standards with justified intervention for both financial and academic reasons. I say that just to let you know several things. One, the financial aspect of it is rather straightforward. You either reduce your expenditures, or you get additional revenues, or ideally both. The academic side is far more complex. It takes a concerted effort from all concerned and a determination not to accept low expectations. That's been the killer in this state for years. Many people believe students that are in the inner city or rural or whatever the category happens to be just can't do it. And if there's anything I've learned in my years of education, I've found the most intelligent, capable, creative, talented people in the most unusual places in this state. They had nothing, they looked at their school, and you wondered where they would go from there, but that is a disappointment, and I have to believe we've got some of that here because these achievement issues did not just arrive in the last year or so. I want to bring to your attention, I, as a former State Superintendent and then after I retired, intervening in several systems at the request of various groups, large systems very similar to Montgomery, I would say that I've been involved in at least 15 interventions for school systems. And regardless of the size of the system, the location of the system, the financial capacity of the system, several common factors emerge. And one I want to especially emphasize tonight, and it'll become more apparent as I go through my presentation, it has been my observation, and it's been confirmed multiple times, that a major variable contributing to the intervention of a school system is the Board of Education. We have a tendency to look elsewhere, but you have the overall responsibility for this Therefore, I'm going to hold you responsible, and as I will say later, whether or not Montgomery is removed from intervention will be the performance of this Board of Education. Let me identify--I haven't observed Montgomery. I mean, I've lived here most of my life, but I have two grandchildren in Auburn, and my wife explained it to me several years ago, we needed to be closer to them, so I live in Auburn. But I want to--so I haven't observed you, and what I'm about to say is not solely directed at you, but it will be based on my experience of intervening in multiple school systems. But I would say that based on what I have observed and the information I've gathered over these last few days, much of this will hold true. First situation with Boards of Education. Upon being seated as a Board Member, they immediately become educational experts. A fatal flaw. It's one of the, I think, damaging aspects of the behavior of many Board Members. And I could give you several reasons, but I'd like to give you the next one, which I think is critical. Once Boards assume that they're the educational expert, the role of the Superintendent is diminished quickly. And as a result of this expert status that's been self-appointed, the decision to select a highly competent Superintendent is seldom realized. A Superintendent is often in these environments selected because he or she will follow the Board's lead, not because of highly competent credentials or proven leadership ability. I would say to you, and I've been in searches and I've been involved in different capacities, finding highly competent proven leaders is not easy. And to just give you one side note, I've been asked to advise some systems on this, and the question is, why would a person meeting that definition come to a given system? It wasn't Montgomery, I was talking other systems. And the first thing, there are two questions that all good Superintendents will ask. What kind of Board do I have? Am I going to be able to do something constructive, or am I likely to get fired in two years? And the second is, what is the financial situation? So the challenge before you, as we move in that direction, is to make sure the environment is such that those two questions could be answered more positively than we could answer them tonight. Now, so the Superintendent is the educational expert, and that's the one that should provide the leadership. I would say what's even more difficult and is contributing to your academic problems, the most important people in the school system are not in the Gordon Persons Building where I operate or at this board table here. They're the principals and teachers in the schools. If it's going to happen, it's going to happen there, and you have to make sure that you've made every effort you can to attract, employ, retain, and develop outstanding principals and teachers. I get a lot of credit for being a decent Superintendent in Auburn, but I'll tell you, I had some dynamite principals that made me look good. It wasn't me. And part of that problem of getting good people, good principals, is very similar to the Superintendent. Why would a good, a great principal come to this system? Is that person going to be given some authority to correctly administer the school and to be able to have input into the hiring of excellent teachers or not? So I would say we must understand that as soon as a Superintendent is hired and it becomes apparent that that Superintendent is not going to be able to make the decisions that a Superintendent should, principals and teachers see that immediately, and there are two options there. Number one is they'll be reluctant to follow any direction because they're not confident the Superintendent can deliver. I've seen that 50 times. The second is, the principals particularly will go into a defensive posture because they will not be willing to take risks and stick their neck out if they don't think they're going to be able to get support from both the Superintendent and the Board. So the summary of that is gridlock prevails, and I've seen that multiple times, and I have to believe that is something we need to take a look at here. A third problem that I've found in dealing with Boards is that Board Members frequently view themselves as an employment agency for friends and acquaintances without regard to levels of competence. The Board, as you know, is responsible for hiring a Superintendent, the Board Attorney, and the Chief Financial Officer. Every other employment decision should be made by the Superintendent, period. And if that's not the case, then you've neutralized the effectiveness of this Superintendent. Oftentimes, as I've seen Boards, and again, I'm not pointing this at you, I'm just saying, looking at all the systems I've been involved in, this is a pattern, and every single one of them, that intervention was required, this pattern emerged, every single one of these. To further weaken the Superintendent, Boards frequently reject recommendations and delay action, which once again confirms for those in the field that the Superintendent's not really in charge. There really is a way to do it. That doesn't mean every time a Superintendent brings something up that you should approve it, but it should be discussed, and the Superintendent should know from you, either individually or in small groups, "We have some reservations about this decision, and it shouldn't show up in a public meeting," which shows a real conflict between the Board and the Superintendent. Now, you on the Board may take the position that much of this occurred before you became a Board Member, and I could certainly say this intervention occurred before I became interim State Superintendent, but we're in this--we're there now. You're the Board, I'm the Superintendent, and it's our problem to solve. I could go on in this regard, and I'll get to the intervention standards in just a minute, but I can safely say to you that no school system will operate in an effective manner if those conditions exist that I just identified. Doesn't have to be all of them, any of them. So the real question is, what do Boards do? And we could talk about that, I won't spend much time on that. You have an important role. This is a position that takes a lot of sacrifice, and I commend you for your willingness to serve, but you must clearly understand your role and that of the Superintendent, but more importantly, what does it really take to get the results for the students that we need? And I think if we keep that in mind, the rest of it will fall in place. Now, I would say then that I'm going to hold you responsible for this intervention, and my sole criterion for reviewing whether or not Montgomery should move out of this intervention at some point will be my observation of this Board's performance. And I hope that as we go forward, we'll focus on why we're here and not let any of those other issues creep into our decisions. Now, standards of intervention. looking at all the systems I've been involved in, this is a pattern in every single one of them that intervention was required, this pattern emerged, every single one of these. To further weaken the Superintendent, Boards frequently reject recommendations and delay action, which once again confirms for those in the field that the Superintendent's not really in charge. There really is a way to do it. That doesn't mean every time a Superintendent brings something up that you should approve it. But it should be discussed and the Superintendent should know from you, either individually or in small groups, we have some reservations about this decision and it shouldn't show up in a public meeting which shows a real conflict between the Board and the Superintendent. Now you on the Board may take the position that much of this occurred before you became a Board Member. And I could certainly say, this intervention occurred before I became interim State Superintendent. But, we're in this, we're in, we're there now. You're the Board, I'm the Superintendent, and it's our problem to solve. I could go on in this regard, and I'll get to the intervention standards in just a minute, but I can safely say to you that no school system will operate in an effective manner if those conditions exist that I just identified. Doesn't have to be all of them, any of them. So the real question is, what do Boards do? And we could talk about that, I won't spend much time on that. You have an important role. This is a position that takes a lot of sacrifice and I commend you for your willingness to serve. But you must clearly understand your role and that of the Superintendent. But more importantly, what does it really take to get the results for the students that we need? And I think if we keep that in mind, the rest of it'll fall in place. Now, I would say then that I'm going to hold you responsible for this intervention. And my sole criterion for reviewing whether or not Montgomery should move out of this intervention at some point will be my observation of this Board's performance. And I hope that as we go forward, we'll focus on why we're here and not let any of those other issues creep into our decisions. Now, standards of intervention. As I said, my primary reason for being here is to try to clarify the standards, but I want again to repeat that I'm looking to this Board to demonstrate that it wants to have a school system second to none and it understands the variables that it takes and will make the hard decisions to accomplish that. It's gonna be difficult. I assure you. All I would say, and I hope you don't misunderstand this, I don't believe that intervention can be resolved unless the Board adopts that performance level. Don't think it'll ever be resolved. The state may leave, but the problems will still be you. And so, I want to say that if, for some reason, this performance, and I'm not talking about whether you get along or you speak or you disagree, that's, that's normal behavior. I'm talking about are you looking at the complex and comprehensive plan necessary to resolve this? You don't want somebody like me coming in here and telling you what you got to do. I wouldn't either. But if we're just gonna sit here and manage the system and go through the motions, then it's gonna demonstrate to me that this Board is not willing to rise up to the serious task that lies before us. Now, we're here, hopefully we can help some. But really, it's gonna be up to you and you know this system, even though I've spent a number of years here, you know this system better than I do. Now, if that doesn't work out, then I would anticipate that the intervention standards will be made more severe. Now, let's talk about the two standards, financial. You can see on there, and I'm sure they're popping up on the screen here, and I don't need to read those. I just wanna talk to you about several things, finance. As I said earlier, that's the easiest problem to solve. But, you probably are aware that you've just gotten word or are receiving word that your revenue stream has been greatly reduced for this fiscal year and for the next. And I would say to you, and which is, you know, tomorrow is the last day of this fiscal year. And to get that word this late, several things I could say, but we'll leave that off. It's just an impossible situation. But one of the standards that you have here for this financial intervention, as you can see, is operating without an approved budget. You can't do that. Sound Boards make their decisions in the spring and early summer and work out the budget through the summer and by late summer, that's done. And I believe this Board has asked for another extension for the next fiscal year's budget, which is to say it won't be due tomorrow. Is that correct, Dr. Eggleston? Has that request been made?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's the answer. I would say yes, okay, which means you're gonna be operating at least a month without an approved budget. Now, that's one of the major tasks of a Board, to make sure the resources are allocated and to the right places, okay? So I would ask why? Why are we asking for a delay of that budget? And then, we cited this for the previous year and now here we are with the same issue again.
Dr. Richard, that comes along in the interview, but their request is now, the extension is now for this Board. So this all has been because of this all intervention, so this is new information to me.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. That's a, that's a valid point. And I, what you're saying then, I guess, Dr. Eggleston, is you've made that request and the Board was unaware of it. Is that correct?
None of us knew that, Dr. Eggleston.
No, I, I heard that, I-
Now, in fact, if we were to have a, we're assuming that that was necessary, that was the paper. We're supposed to be working together, but we're supposed to do well. If then, this paper did happen, then certainly, we were permitted then to do what was necessary to provide a better this year.
That's a fair statement. I will assume that that's, since I'm here now, that's a responsibility for me to resolve. I assume that the Board would have to approve that, but I accept what you've said. And so I will just say to you, and as I get to the end, I hope that, you know, the Board will be able to function more as a Board, that's my intention here, but I would say to you that, um, that needs to be corrected. So, after tonight, then you'll be in a position to get with Dr. Eggleston and others. All right, now, there've been a number of things I could say further and there's no need really to go into that. But I'll just give you an example. There was a large system to the north of here that I've spent some time with in intervention. And the first time the intervention was for finance and they submitted a budget that left out all the code numbers for hiring teachers. And it was past the deadline, which was a hundred and ten million dollar loss. Now, we were able to correct that just by not asking any questions because obviously that system couldn't operate without that. So I would say to you, this is a critical variable and after tonight, I hope that this Board will move quickly, not only to get a budget ready, but will put its priorities in place in terms of allocation of resources. The last one is, go pass that up where it says three, B3. I think this was a statement that our finance people gave us and to summarize finance, as you can see, signaled a rapidly declining financial transaction process. There are some issues within the system that can easily be corrected, but if left as they are, somebody will come to you in two or three years and make this same type of statement. And we will correct that and I will make that apparent as we go along, not tonight. But as you can see, it's placing you with undue exposure to risk. And one risk we just found out about in terms of that reduction of funds, including loss of funds which would deprive students of the services. That's who's getting hurt here. Not us. I can't stand that. Now, in financial progress, I wanna commend you. I think moving to establish a one-month operating balance and keep in mind that is required, but it's also the minimum. But you've made good progress in that and your finance person has given me some encouragement that by the end of the year, that would be realized. So I commend you for whatever's been done to reach that. Unfortunately, that was before this last news broke about the reduction of funds. So that is gonna have, you're gonna have to recalculate there and see. Now, there was also, as I mentioned to you, another system further north than I talked to you about just a minute ago that had major problems in human resources. And really, in fact, there's two of them, two big systems I could identify. And those issues revolved around two things, more than one person was able to hire and the systems, whether it was between maintenance and operations or schools or whatever, were not connected in a way that each related to each other and the right hand knew what the left hand was doing. So sometimes people hired people without even the Board knowing about it. And so, that exists here and that can be easily corrected, but it will need to be corrected. I'm not faulting anybody for it, I'm just saying that's the way it is. In transportation, you heard, read in the paper as I did, that was the first time I knew anything about intervention and I thought it was rather surprising that intervention would be based on school buses. What you do is you'd simply take the school buses off the route and you can't use them. That's what ordinarily one would do in transportation. But according to our recent audit, they have met the minimum standards for having a good transportation system. And so I also commend the Board that you've made progress in that and that comes off the table as a factor for intervention. Now, to the one that I want to encourage you to give thought to, and that's academics. According to the data that I've received, forty of the fifty Montgomery Public Schools were below the state proficiency rate. Now, there are two or three variables there that I would mention. That doesn't happen in one year. That happens over a long period of time. Two, the state assessment system has not been something that I would support and would indicate that would give us reliable data. So that's not your problem, that's our problem. Currently, the State Board has chosen to use the Scantron system, which is administered three times a year, which is a, simply a stopgap measure until we can get a comprehensive assessment program in place. And that is one of my four priorities. But the baseline data, that is what will be the threshold for the Scantron, will be available by November fifteenth of this year. And so when the next administration in January occurs, we should know what the threshold is, but at that point, there should be an assessment, not that you do it personally, but you should have staff to give you the summary information and know what we have to do before the spring administration. And we need to show progress. You won't remove all of those in one year or two years. But we need to see progress in that regard. The standard for Scantron that has been set, and that was, that was set before I arrived, is that seventy percent of your schools will meet that proficiency rate. Now, think about it. If eighty percent of the schools are not now, and you've gotta have seventy percent will, yes, I understand, Dr. Keith, I would, I would nod my head the same way you did, that's, that's almost unrealistic. But, look at it this way. Let's say seventy percent, we're gonna, you're gonna have to work at that, but let's say we move in that direction. Just ask yourself this question. What thirty percent of your students are you gonna say we're not gonna worry about? You're not gonna wanna make that decision, you wouldn't be a Board Member if, that you would say, I don't care. You're not, you care and that's why you're here. And I couldn't stand it either. And we're not gonna correct this in one night because I would just say to you, my experience in academic intervention, and we've done several, when I was State Superintendent, one of the first schools I intervened in, of all things, was Cloverdale School. That was tough. But I would tell you this, that there are many variables that you have to consider and you have to have a comprehensive plan and be willing to let it work. One, you gotta, if you have great teachers and principals, you're eighty percent of the way home right off the bat. And that doesn't mean a smiling face. That means someone that knows the subject matter, is interested in teaching, and a principal knows that he or she is in charge of the school and can make the decisions necessary to correct whatever deficiencies are there. So we've got to make sure we have a system that can attract. You've got some dynamite teachers in this system, I'm not questioning that. You've got some schools that are knocking the top out. We're talking about all the schools now. We're talking about all the teachers now. So you've got to have a system that will do that. But what gets me the most, and I said this earlier, are low expectations. We can say what we want, but if we can accept eighty percent of our schools below the threshold, deep down, we don't believe those students can achieve at a high level. I don't accept that. But that attitude is gonna be in the schools. What I found in intervention, I would just add, is that you'll find some great teachers particularly that have either given up because the school was not administered correctly or whatever reason it happened to be, and they just get in a defensive posture to say, uh, wait, wait until three o'clock and I can go home. But when you get the leadership there and when they see there's a commitment to student achievement, you'll see those teachers rise up and do things that they didn't think they could do and you didn't think they could do. They're there. So it's not a question, let's say we could fire all of them, where would you go to get outstanding replacements? No. So I want to convey, what I'm trying to convey with this point is the academic intervention is gonna challenge you far more than anything that you've done as a Board Member. Now, next steps. I believe that since I've identified you as a critical variable in this intervention strategy, and I strongly believe that, I believe that you have to function more as a Board than you have in the past, because if I'm gonna hold you responsible, but yet not let you function like knowing about an extension of the request for the budget or whatever, it, it's a little unfair to you. And I hope that we can have some discussions, I've talked with Dr. Eggleston already about that. Uh, and my goal will be, is to make sure this Board operates as a Board, you know how to do that. And we can talk about that at a later time, be glad to meet with you later if there are any questions about what authority or what you can do. And hopefully in the near term, if we can get this thing going in the right direction, you're gonna appoint your own Superintendent. A highly competent and proven leader. Proven because the person's been there and demonstrated he or she can do it. So that's my goal. I want the Montgomery Board to operate as a Board, to have the authority that it has, and I believe we can balance that with the intervention. At this point, since I'm not prepared to say appoint a Superintendent, but that is something I hope we can move toward, Dr. Eggleston will serve in that role as he has. But he will interact with your Board Chair and Board Members as a Superintendent would. And of course, he would reserve the right as my appointment, although the previous Superintendent did the appointment, that if you made decisions that impacted negatively on the financial intervention standards that have been identified or academic standards, then he would have the authority to override the Board. Now, let's walk it out a little bit further. Let's say in the near term, you've, you've got, you've assumed your responsibility, you're making the best decisions you can with limited resources and a very tight timeline. And it's now, you're ready to select a Superintendent. And, uh, just to make a parallel statement, yesterday when I met with the State Board, I encouraged them to start the process to select my replacement. And I would say to you, I said to them, don't worry about what you don't want. Don't worry about what the textbooks tell you of thirty-five things that everybody has to have and nobody can possess all of those. Think carefully about what skillset your Superintendent will need to move this system forward. forward. And don't don't start with the platitudes, gotta communicate and all that shit, we all know that. Think about it. This person is gonna have to be an instructional leader. It's gonna have to set very high standards. It's gonna have to be able to attract good people to come into this system. It's gonna have to keep you informed and up to date. But I want you to think about that, but in the event that that happens within the near future, then Dr. Eggleston will move to the chief administrative officer and will attend the meetings, as I have done in other systems, and will still play the role that he I just described. But you then should be able to perform as a board, to make decisions that don't impact negatively on those intervention standards, and should not face the fact that you could be overturned. Now, I'm confident that in time, working together, together, the Board of Education will assume its full authority, and I'm confident that you'll be able to develop strategies with the leadership that we have. And this is the year to demonstrate that you can do that. Because I'd say to you, the Montgomery Public School students can't wait any longer. Now, I would hope that that would give you some encouragement. You've made progress and we have steps for encouragement. My next step, which is I'm not prepared to do now, but I will start that next week, is to review the intervention team, many from the department and others, and to determine, one, if we have the right people, and two, if they're in the right spots. And you'll be apprised of that. So my second step will be to look at the team and how we can be helpful in addressing the issues. That's probably more than you wanted to hear, but I want to say to you, we would like to be of assistance. But I make no apologies for the intervention and I'll make no apologies for taking whatever steps necessary to move this system in the right direction, as I am assuming you will do the same. So that completes my presentation. If you have questions that I can answer, I'll be glad to try to do that.
I have one.
Yes, sir?
You have two of these meetings to attend to. I'm sure I think you do this today, in terms of my two meetings, you've shown that you are working. But what?
When's your next meeting? When's your next meeting? Aren't you gonna have another meeting, don't you? Well, I mean, you do have call meetings and things like that, but what and I'm not pushing you, I just wanna know when it is your next, when in in October, when is when do you meet? That's a little late.
The seventh Tuesday, I think, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-one, the twenty-two.
So the answer is it'll be depend on when you next meet. I understood that some items had been taken off the agenda and that you were gonna have a call meeting because there were some there were some financial issues, sale of property and things like that that were gonna be considered at some later date. I don't know whether you are or not, but I assumed you were gonna meet fairly soon. Is that not the case?
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
Okay. Well, let's you can talk to the board, but the key, I think, is, but what you did with the best of intentions and you did it with instructions elsewhere. I understand you didn't do that, I'm not blaming you. But what you did when we took that approach was to neutralize the board. And we got to make sure, I'm gonna hold them responsible, but I need to give them the authority to make to respond. So I would say then, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I'll wait to hear. I will take me next week to do what I'm gonna do in terms of staffing and realignment, whatever. And then if you want to have a work session or a committee of the whole or whatever it is, I'll be glad to come back. Okay? All right? Absolutely. No question about it. Absolutely right. I'm committed. Thank you very much, Ms. Piusen. There is no silver bullet. I don't stand before you and say I have the answers, but I'll work with you. Absolutely. And the issue for me is the sustainability. No matter how long this goes on, at some point, the state's gonna go home. And if you haven't had the authority to perform as a board, then you're not gonna be ready to assume that responsibility. So, okay. Good deal. Yes, ma'am, Dr. Keith? Yes, ma'am, it's me.
As far as we have an MRC, it's a form. At any time, we'd be able to hire some of that positions since the finances, and it goes back to what you said, we have to have stability, so is this a good time to do this? Not a good time to do this?
It do I understand. That's a fair question. And that is a position that the board is charged to employ. But I would say, based on the person that I've worked with, I didn't know him before I got here a week ago, he brings a lot to the table in terms of finance. And say we need to make sure we get our budget straight and our there's some, as I said, there's some internal issues, there's nothing wrong, nobody's taking him, I'm not saying criminal, I'm just saying operationally, there's some things that need to be corrected, and I believe he will be able to do that. Now, once we get that going, then let's ask the question at that time. Because ideally, you the answer would be yes, but this is not the time, I think, particularly since we've just been surprised. Oh, well, now, that's 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 a sound approach, too. Let's get this budget locked down and see how this loss of revenue is gonna impact us, and then ask me that question again, because to have that person come in and train, that's a good idea. That I recommend that.
But I know that we are agreed to the intervention. We were told that we would that the state would be intervening over ten schools, then we went to three, then we went to twenty-seven. So where are we as far as the intervention is discussed?
You've let me just go, that's a fair question. There was a lot of confusion. To tell you the truth, it made no sense to me at all to do it that way. And the financial intervention, the academics, you got eighty percent of your schools, so we might as well say the system was gonna work as a whole. And so I think there's no way to intervene, because if you just take a few schools and the other schools here and they feed into here, you just can't make it work. So the intervention is for the Montgomery Public Schools, and I think certainly, we may focus more on schools that have serious needs and go forward, but when you have the financial situation, I mean, that impacts the whole school system, so we we can't hide from that.
People asked, yeah, we were allowed to have it because it was taken away. We have learned that we're responsible for some of our time.
Well, that's another position, just like when you mentioned it. Dr. Eggleston sort of explained to me how this is working and how you're getting legal advice and that sort of thing. I I don't know the answer, I'm just gonna find out.
Legal counsel at the State Department.
Okay.
That's been the guidance that we've been, you don't ask moving forward since the individual there, that was one of the reasons.
Well, I mean, I understand that, my understanding of that outside of somebody and everybody else did, spread something in the air, let us know that they that the state was a client and that we were also a client and that it was a conflict of interest, but we chose to keep that deal because he was so, the word was so vast and we appreciate it in times.
Well, I can't see that we have legal counsel because I would see you as an individual who's sort of a master, and you can't work with the state unless you work with the spirit. We didn't choose to do that because I'm sitting at the table, I never mind a week.
Could we just, Dr. Eggleston, could we just meet with you?
Sure, sure. That's what we need. This is the type question need to be answered.
Not just meeting, but a meeting with you.
Fair enough. Sure. That's the way to do it. I recommend that. And I'm here every day, so whenever you get ready, if you I would ask that, Mr. Chairman and others, if you would frame your questions such as been made, then I can come better prepared to answer the question for you. Okay? All right? Anything else? Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you. Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Okay.
I am passing out a one-pager. You should have received the full capital plan that you've received in the past. One of the things you that we've talked about on the capital plan is that it is a roadmap of what we need. The State Department has asked that we do that in order to know that we're looking at our buildings. That is why in the past, you've received so many items on the capital plan. What I'm presenting to you at this point is we're gonna concentrate on what we can actually accomplish in these five years. If you recall, for the past six years, we've given you the full Dejawn Plan, which goes touches about just about all of our schools, with things that we knew we would not handle in five years, but this will be a more abbreviated version that will actually indicate those items that we will have, that we can take care of in the next five years. And it totals to about twenty million dollars over the next five years, which would be about five million dollars per year, these projects that we have. These are all priority projects that would need to be taken care of. Now, please note, there are no, all these are capital projects. There are some other projects that we will take care of through operations and maintenance money throughout the year. But these are capital projects that you've seen before, but we've went ahead and put the escalation costs on them and re-prioritized. Now, if you look at the number, the first one that you see, BTW Magnet High School, you will take that one, that one will not really be considered considered part of the five-year plan. However, it is something that is a priority that we know we have to do. So I listed it as one, knowing that this is something we need to address at some point. We've talked about it a good many times as to relocation of BTW, but I wanted it to be number one on the plan, so that it's there, so that the state recognizes that we are cognizant that we need to move out of that particular building. And so we have it have that as number one, once funds are available. If you start with the impact roofing and going down further, you will see those items, listen to what the classification is and what will actually happen at that point in the monies that you have in the year that they'll be taken care of. This has to be submitted to the state by September thirtieth, so that's why we're presenting it to you now to get your approval. I'll entertain any questions. Total excluding BTW, looking at about twenty million dollars over the next five years. Now. Yes, sir?
Right.
both Davis and Floyd Elementary. We've looked at all of those things, but again, it's due to, what can we afford, and how do we prioritize it? But you're correct. Davis and Floyd were listed, but I think Floyd was where we were going to have the new elementary. Matter of fact, I have the schematics and the plans for the new Floyd Elementary, that was done some time ago. So yes, sir, that has been at that point, but we just hadn't gotten to that with roofing and other things that we have to do where we spend our money on. Any other questions?
Dr. Richardson, Senior State Department of Leadership. Each of you should have received a copy of the Alabama Trusts for Boards of Education, annual renewal agreements for auto liability, and general liability slash errors and omission coverage for selected risk. The cost of the premiums for the GL component is $15,162. And the cost for the premium coverage for the automobile liability portion is $106,143. I'd like to inform the board that we have executed payment. If I could just may give you a brief backdrop to what we have historically done, at least under my career, which spans about 16 years, we have elected to walk in these premium payments on the very last day of the fiscal year. I was always anxious when I made these personal deliveries, just out of concern for what could go wrong. But please be informed that we have executed payment, and we thought going forward, in a spirit of transparency, it does involve a considerable financial outlay of board funds. We thought going forward, we would establish the precedence of bringing this particular expenditure before the board on an annual basis. Perhaps, but the normal course of action that occurred this time was mirror what has occurred previously. With respect to ASPY, as you know, the board requires a membership into ASPY in order to participate in the trust. It's a self-insured trust. ASPY informs the superintendent and the CSFO. The notification comes in the board, not to the Board of Education, but to the superintendent of the board and the CSFO. I'm included in, in the courtesy copy position, because I have been the coordinator to ensure this transaction occurs. So what has happened this time, under the interventional framework, really mirrors what has happened previously in my 15- and 16-year career. Sure. Absolutely. Are there any other questions? No, we have, we can evaluate the data, the risk and the costs associated with the particular risk, selected risk exposures. You really would compare the coverage that we are afforded through ADP, Alabama Trust for Boards of Education, against your private commercial carriers. And since the mid-1980s, when the Alabama legislatures, I think we have several lawyers here, and they perhaps can speak on this better than I, but I do recall, in the era of tort reform, in the mid-'80s, the Alabama Legislature established tort limits for selected risk. After that particular legislative mandate, your commercial carriers dropped, ceased to offer liability coverage to boards of education. For example, yes. Yes. For example, there's no coverage for a worksman comp claims against the board from a commercial carrier. Okay? And the administrative cost is more favorable through ADP, or Alabama Trust for Boards of Education, because certain, certain factors that would go into a commercial carrier's profit model, administrative costs that, that's comprised of selected losses, commissions, and profit, profit criteria. Those factors are not included in ARMS, not ARMS, but Alabama Trust for Boards of Education model, because they are nonprofit, they self-insured, tax-exempt, member-owned. Okay? Well, these are the rules respective to ADP renewal process. It does require the Board of Education executing a coverage agreement prior to actually being invoiced.
And for Dr. Agelson, I just ask, I know you've been out of ten for two weeks with your military active duty, but we, as a board, need to have that information delivered to us, the folks that are proceeding. The board may need it.
Well, I think we have to take a lot of things in consideration right now, and I hear you.
Thank you. I don't want to be like that. Just in a way, I think that I want to let everybody know, I think it was just, I know I've been frustrated, but, you know, you've been getting emails this afternoon, and I know that's difficult for all the employees still to keep running them in time to get information to all of them. If we would just follow the policies and procedures in the NPL, I mean, the, you know, there is a reason for all of that. I do hope that we take some different questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Each delegation of any board shall select its board, and five years later, the superintendent, five years to be allocated for individual business, five years to be allocated for delegation to address some vote. Board additionally, along with each of the registered individuals, five minutes of thirty minutes prior to continuing the session, at the location of the individual's study. Board at the time, comments about actions, statements, or statements, not appropriate voting content, it should be first, the superintendent, process, the label, chapter. Individuals who are committed to the request, be ready to take forward step.
Is, then help me understand. This is my neighbor. This is my neighbor baby. Unfortunately, she was born before September 1st. So, she is in kindergarten. My little girl, unfortunately, she came out in December. Unfortunately, she can't go to kindergarten. So, I had the law passed where five-year-olds don't have to go to kindergarten, they immediately go to the first grade. My baby go to Gary Elementary in pre-K. No one can give me no rules about why she's being kicked off the bus. Kicked off. She rode the bus from August the 15th up until September the 5th, because Mr. Dotson tells the staff, he's going to terminate them if he let my little girl get back on. I apologize. I've called over and over again, I spoke to the superintendent, I talked with Mr. Mike Sinis before he quit, no name. Okay, I talked to nine people. They said preschool cannot ride the bus. She's not preschool, she's pre-K. She will be going to the first grade with her friend next year. It's bad enough, you've got to explain to two four-year-olds that one can ride and one can't. Somebody need to help me understand this. Explain to me why is individual principals making up rules as they go? She is not in preschool. She's in pre-K. She got to wear uniform with, with Gary Elementary. She got to do everything Gary do. But she can't be treated equal. She's being discriminated. Tell, a driver blocked her and made her cry, and told her she had to go back home and get your mom to ring you, because I can't let you ride. Something is wrong with this picture. We're supposed to be for the students. A bus is safe. Can they keep hollering strengths? This baby is no bigger than my baby. My baby can spell her name, she rode the bus. The principal unfortunately says, she got to have a letter. No other child have to have a letter to ride the bus. So, board, help me out today. Tell me why is my baby being discriminated? She's all for Gary. She's all for Gary. She'll be there next year. She will be at Gary next year. Chloe, tell her what you just sang on the bus, and the bus driver said he missed you about it.
The wheels on the bus go round and round, round and round.
Heaven, do you miss my baby riding the bus with you? They stopped right in front of my house. Right in front of my house. And my own child cannot ride the bus. And by the way, it's private property. Private property. I don't even want to talk about the special needed bus to tear up the road, to pick up the last house kids. They tear it up. I have to buy dirt. But y'all can't help me get my child to school? Somebody got to tell me. And I'm going to stay down here every week till we get it resolved. She's not preschool. She's pre-K. It's a different, a bit different. She can spell her name. Spell her name for me, baby. What's your address?
113.
They don't want you to know. But that's how intelligent she is, she is. Do I need to ask her for her sign of the alphabet? I work with her. I served for eight years, I've seen so much corrupt things going on in the school system, and it doesn't make any sense. I've called over eight people, and all they doing is giving me the runaround, passing the book. Don't that sound familiar? And not calling back. Protocol. When you go through protocol, the protocol person should not send you back down the chain to somebody beneath them. Something's wrong with that picture. But y'all sitting in these chairs, using these titles, and not trying to help a parent. Oh, I got 20 seconds? So maybe somebody can tell me, because I'm going to be here every day for now. You kick a five, four-year-old that'll be five in December, that's going to first grade next year. For you those who are sitting in the audience, tell people, they don't want to tell good news. Your kid do not have to go up north to go to school on time. That's backwards. So, somebody call me. The number is 271-0036. I don't care nothing about it being public. 271-0036. I would love for my child to be able to go to school.
I came, according to my neighborhood, with some complaints, but after listening to Dr. Richardson, I'm going to hold those complaints until later on, so I can see if what he said to us tonight, as I take it back into the community, whether it is going to proceed, and you are going to collaborate with each other, so that our children can receive what they go to school to receive every day. Now, the one thing I see in the paper, we need to look closely at the model of intervention, but I would also say, we will start next week to assess personnel that have been assigned, and what they are and what they are doing and if they're in the right spot. Now, that's what got my attention. If those that you've hired are in the right spot. Richardson said all positions will be evaluated as well as MPS position moves made by the state intervention team. That really got my attention. That you will go back and review that which you have done to place people in positions in the school system that should not have been placed in the spots according to the community that you place them in. Now, it said also the school-to-prison pipeline has received a lot of attention in recent years. And efforts to stem the flow of former students to prison primarily revolve around reducing suspension and exposures in school. That's something for you to take into consideration because we do need to find out what is needed in order to help our children stay in school. These are things that I feel like according to another statement in the paper where you said, "We have all got to come together." Now, when I come to the next meeting, if I don't see where anything is improving, I'm gonna let you know what I had intended to say to you at this meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. How you all doing? Well, it's a pleasure to be back with you tonight. I'm gonna make this pretty brief, but I want to take a moment to personally invite you all to the fourth annual Brain Brawl Trivia Challenge. This is, as I just mentioned, the fourth annual one, so we've been doing this a few years now. I know a few of you in the room, as well as on the board, have had the opportunity to attend in the past, which we've always been very grateful for. As you all know, this trivia night event has been held annually to support the work we do at the Montgomery Education Foundation, including the Brain Forest, Reading on Wheels, and the Week Can Network. For four years, this has been an exciting, community-driven event, and it continues to grow. And it really brings out individuals from all areas of the community, which is great to see them in support of our students and our schools. They show a lot of pride in our schools, and of course, they're all competing very hard to win the fifteen hundred dollars in cash for the Montgomery Public School of their choice that their team is representing. Now, last year, the Southern Poverty Law Center took the third-place prize for Southland Elementary. That was seven hundred and fifty dollars. Capella and Howard Law Firm won the second-place prize of a thousand dollars for Baldwin Middle. And the top prize went to Lamp, which was fifteen hundred dollars. And that was actually a team of teachers that came out and played. And this year, there's gonna be a team of teachers and their students are actually entering the play. So the competition's definitely gonna be stiffer. We really wanna ensure that every school has a sponsor or a team to compete on their behalf. So I wanna share this information with you as well because all of you may be familiar with partners in your district who want to support a school or who'd be interested in sponsoring a team, whether it be teachers, students, or just parents and community members that wanna compete to win for their school. Please don't hesitate to contact me. My information's in the packet if any of you are interested in having a sponsor for your school. I also do need to make an announcement regarding Network Night. In coordination with Ms. Finley, we've decided that it's probably best that we postpone tonight's Network Night, given where we're at on timing and the fact that the event does usually take around ninety minutes to execute. Now, it's not terrible news because actually on Monday, we already have one scheduled at Capitol Heights Middle School for five-thirty, which I think is a pretty nice time. And we will have refreshments provided by the Chamber of Commerce as well at that meeting that night. I'm sorry for any inconvenience I may provide, but I've just felt with the timing and me and Ms. Finley thought that it may be best to postpone and defer to the Monday night. There's also gonna be plenty more, as you all know, to come, and these have been really successful events. We just kicked off about two weeks ago at Community Congregational Church, which was representing, we have representatives from across the entire linear field of pattern for that meeting, and it was really successful, great conversation, and a lot of action, which is really what the Week Can Network is all about. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I actually think I might have some time to answer that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Since the last meeting, you have not responded, Superintendent Elveston, as you said you would, and nobody has responded. So if we're gonna collaborate and do stuff in order, we need to collaborate not only with parents, teachers, but individuals in the community on every issue. And so I'm gathering support on behalf of the organization Save Ourselves, who have other organizations, and we collaborate. It's forty organizations, and I'm reaching out on a national level. And I reached out to a Dr. Margaret Story. She's a professor of history, and she's the interim dean at DePaul University and College of Liberal Arts and History. Other support letters will be coming. She's the author of Loyalty and Loss: Alabama's Unionists During the Civil War and Reconstruction and a Scholar of the American South in the nineteenth century. Like Ms. Jones, I believe that the proper place for the statue is at the Confederate White House Museum rather than on the grounds of a school whose population is now largely African-American. As scholars have known for some time, and as the public is now increasingly aware, Confederate memorial statues like the one, like this one, were erected in three waves during or immediately after the Civil War, usually in cemeteries, during the establishment of Jim Crow segregation in the late nineteenth century, and throughout the period of lynching that followed and during the modern civil rights movement and the process of desegregation that began in nineteen fifty-four with the Brown v. Board of Education decision. In the case of Lehigh, the pattern seems very much to have been followed. The original erection dates to the Jim Crow period, nineteen oh eight, at a time in which riots spread and violent disenfranchisement of African-Americans were central to Alabama's public culture. The statue was moved to Lehigh, then a white school in nineteen sixty, at a time of the widening of U.S. eighty. But the school, though not open until nineteen fifty-five, was named after Robert E. Lee by the school board in November nineteen fifty-four, a mere six months after the Brown decision mandated desegregation of public schools. In my opinion, the school should be renamed now as well. It referenced, this letter referenced the Montgomery Advertisers quote, and I'm gonna just go on down the letter. She said, "At the time, Lehigh School's student population was all white, and it seems clear that the statue and the celebration of it was warmly welcomed by the students, faculty, and families associated with the school, who presumably identified strongly with the lost cause. The school newspaper was, after all, called 'The Stars and Bars,' referring to the first flag of the Confederacy. That is no longer the case. The statue now stands as a rebuke to the students who attend this school. Despite the changed population of the school and despite the changed social and political landscape of our country, the statue still stands, as it always has, in celebration of the general who led Confederate armies against the United States in full-fledged war. It stands as the school name does in honor of a man who, by any definition, committed treason in order to defend a rebellious nation dedicated to the proposition that white supremacy was the best social order upon which a republic could be built and that slavery was a key institution to preserve that social order. It stands as a testament to the ideological commitment to furthering that ideology in the form of Jim Crow and to the continuing defense of segregation by situating his name and his likeness on the most embattled site of all during the civil rights movement, a public school. But the public school is now attended by mostly African-American students, many of whom are descendants of that portion of Alabamians who were held in slavery before the Civil War. Some of them likely are descended from men and women who resisted the Confederacy as spies, saboteurs, and soldiers. In other words, there have always been Alabamians, black and white, who did not support the Confederacy, but instead the Union, and whose sacrifice and loyalty goes virtually unremarked in public. If the Civil War must be memorialized at a public school, there are African-Americans who served in the United States' colored troops and who could be represented there instead of a general who fought to keep blacks in chains. And I have letters for each one of you all, and I'll be providing them to the press, the media, if you would like a copy.
Mr. Porterfield, I'm about to just say a first special topic, but I understand that you're saying that I think that we need to be very careful with opening of the cameras. I think that, I mean, I'm going for the living, you're seeing on the footage. I know that, but I'm trying to say that I think you know, that there is a lot that 's going on before, and you can hear and you can argue about it, but there is a lot that needs to be done. And I think that let's get a little closer and closer to the question.
Now, Mr. Porterfield, to suspend the rules, you have to have five votes. You have four. How many votes were there? I didn't see it. Were there five or four? Therefore, I didn't care.
Mr. Wade, would you please, in case we're shooting off, put in whatever we have at the next meeting? That would be, I think, the problem.
Mr. President, I know that the nation, I think, I think we're going to be about to choose. They don't know. This is what we call a teacher in law.
Well, what we did, and if you notice what we did, carried through proper procedure, as relates to whether we want to suspend the rule, this is a pause. If we had a vote on whether or not we would suspend the rule, did that, vote was taken, vote got passed, we must move on. We must move on. Let's get have an opportunity to say. No, I didn't. I didn't want you to do that. I didn't. I didn't.
Mr. Porterfield, I'd like to just remind the public that this is a board meeting in public. It's not a public meeting, so please follow protocol and listen.
I just wanted to state it to you, gentlemen. Okay. Next individual, Karen Jones. You have three minutes to intervention.
Well, I came to talk, came back, and we'll talk about the intervention. And when I heard Ms. Brys talk about this law of the spirit of collaboration, and we don't have that, and this is, we see Patty, yeah, we see Patty LaBelle on the end going over the brainboard about unnecessary stuff. And so I would like to give Andy the remainder of my time. He wants to talk about, he wants to talk about the intervention and what he would like to be implemented in the schools. Now, if I can do that, show me the rule that I can't give him the balance of my time. That's law of rules of procedure. Go ahead, Andy. Go ahead, Andy. This is my time. This is my time. You come on, come on, you do it, Patty. Come on. Come on. No, I'm giving him the balance of my time. Give me, give me the...
Well, if you're gonna speak, please speak. Otherwise, we need to just move. Okay, that is the citizen comments. Next item on the agenda is the district director election. We do have candidate, we do have nominee.
At the moment, I think, I don't have a title one, a department that is new to the administration, and I think that, um, we could not, I guess, um, consider, and perhaps one department that is totality for...